Good morning. All right, due to circumstances beyond my control, I am up here. So, Sharita, please call the roll. When I'll call, the board will come to the order. Please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. President Reed. Nineteen present, you have more.
Thank you, Sharita. With nineteen members present, we have a quorum. If you would all who are able, please stand and we will pray. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. All right. Pardon me, Alderman from the twenty-third?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we take a moment of silence. Mary Goodman's dad, and for Mary Goodman and their family, her dad Randy passed away last week. She's at the funeral today, so if we could just have a moment of silence for Mary Goodman and her family, please.
All right, if we could. All members bow our heads and we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, we have an announcement here. Number three on my agenda. If a resolution is being presented, we will suspend regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. At the presence, if I move for adoption of our courtesy resolutions calendar, I'll entertain a second. Okay. It's been moved in second that we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any resolutions to present? Okay. We will dispense with line item three. Thank you. Introduction of honored guest. Alderman from the twenty-third?
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer, who's sitting in the gallery, and Dave Sweeney, and Craig Schmidt, I believe was here, former Alderman Craig Schmidt, I believe he's up there in the gallery, and Al from the firefighters. Got a message.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
You, Mr. Acting President. I would just like to, my mic, this mic is always, I don't want to break it, so I feel like I have to hold it, but in honor of National Teachers Appreciation Week, I would like to have as my honored guest all the teachers, especially the teachers we have on the floor here. Alderwoman Howard and Alderman Todd, and I'm sorry if I missed any other teachers here. Alderwoman Dr. Green, and of course myself as a mother, as a proud mother and a proud SLPS parent, I want to have a special, send a special love, hugs, peace, positive energy, and thanks to all of the teachers in the St. Louis Public School District.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Mr. Acting President and members of the board, I ditto National Teachers Appreciation Week. We can't say that enough. These are individuals who've made a choice to live in poverty, but educate and move our futures forward. So I really appreciate them, and most especially to my nephew Mario Patton, known as Coach P. He gives us all, even chose not to go to the college level to teach because he wanted to get them younger and get them prepared. And I'd like to give a special shout out as my guest today to the downtown clean team from the SID. I saw three of them this morning. If we didn't have that extra, can you imagine what it would look like? Thank you for all your service.
And Alderwoman from the fourteenth?
I would like to recognize National Nurses Day today. As we, you know, have suffered through the pandemic, the nurses have been on the front line, and I think that we need to recognize them, although I didn't know it in time to get a resolution together, but I think that we just recognize them, and if we know any nurses or have any nurses in our family, give them a shout out. And I also would like to mention that, you know, in the state legislature, they're considering a statewide teachers raise, which they are more than deserving of, and you know, we, Missouri has always been led, led the back of the pack when it comes to teacher salaries, so hopefully we'll get up and be maybe in the middle. So, thank you very much.
Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. I would like to give a great shout out to every woman on the board of Alderman, because Sunday is Mother's Day, whether you're a mother, an aunt, or a big sister, or a mentor, or an Alderman who is all of those things as well. Happy Mother's Day.
And Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. I've got three honored guests today, but two are a package deal. First and foremost, I would like my first honored guest to be Mrs. Filomena Arnowitz. So today marks the one year, the one year anniversary of my predecessor's passing, the Alderman Larry Arnowitz. So if I am able to request so, Mr. Acting President, I would like to request a moment of silence.
Okay, we all, please observe a moment of silence if we could for our past member, Larry Arnowitz.
Thank you, Acting President and dear members of the board. And then finally, on a happier note, I would like to recognize as my honored guest the first and second place winners of the annual St. Louis University Law Day Essay Contest, Ms. Grace Wallace and Mr. Brian Guerin, who themselves are gearing up for law school as they complete their undergraduate, and both submitted excellent essays on the Constitution, the United States Constitution, and should it be changed or should it remain the same? So with that, Mr. President, I thank you and I yield back.
Alderwoman from the eighth?
Maybe. There we go, we got it. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I do want to recognize our teachers. My, my older sister is a longtime teacher in Edwardsville, Illinois, and in leadership of the teachers' union over in Edwardsville, and my mother is also a nurse. So we've got mothers, we've got teachers, and we've got nurses in the family. I'm really proud of them, so let's have them as guests today. And then all of the others in my ward and in the city here, thank you so much for all that you do to keep us safe and educate our kids. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you. And if you're wondering, this is also National Children's Day. Thank you. All right. Approval of the Minutes?
Approval of the Minutes dated April 29th, 2022.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized for approval of the Minutes. All in favor, please say aye. All right. Report of city officials?
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the mental health board. The appointment of Mr. Vander Corless, who resides in the seventh ward, serving an ad large member. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely, Tashara O. Jones, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
All right, Mr. Spencer, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for the approval of the mayor's appointment of Mr. Vander Corless to the mental health board.
Moved in second by Alderman from the twentieth, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the board. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Do we have any other appointments, Sharita?
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Okay. We will dispense with line items seven. We have the informal calendar. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Okay. With that, we'll go to first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 15, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Department of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on Maryville Avenue approximately 580 feet south of the South Curb Line of Maple Avenue. Board Bill 16, sponsored by Alderwoman Evans, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December 16th, 2021, for the 400, I'm sorry, 4100 block through 4134 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive area. Board Bill 17, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Department of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on the Hold'em On tracks by blocking said traffic flow at the East Curb Line of Hamilton Avenue, at the intersection of Hold'em On tracks and Hamilton Avenue, and at the West Curb Line of Goodfellow Boulevard, at the intersection of Hold'em On tracks and Goodfellow Boulevard. Board Bill 18, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and ordinance for the creation of a city youth council to be composed of both adults and members of the youth of the City of St. Louis for the purpose of gathering information for and making policy recommendations to the board and the board of all the, I'm sorry, to the mayor and the board of all the persons concerning the state of children and youth of the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 19, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660, Revised Statutes of Missouri, pursuant to ordinance number 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasure of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, Account 1, appropriating $11,107,000 from said sales tax for a period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, to the ByState Development Agency for certain purposes and contain a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 20, sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660, Revised Statutes of Missouri, pursuant to ordinance number 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasure of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, Account 2, appropriating $11,107,000 from the said sales tax for a period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, to the ByState Development Agency for certain purposes and contain a severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 21, sponsored by, I'm sorry, President Reed and Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $21,209,000 as described in Section 94.600 through 94.655, Revised Statutes of Missouri 2000, as amended for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the ByState Development Agency for transportation purposes and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 22, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and the Board of Esmond and Apportement pertaining to the process through the City of St. Louis Airport Authority, less concessions, contracts at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, amending Section 8 of ordinance number 54999, approved March 19th, 1968, as codified in Section 18.08.080 of the Revised Code, City of St. Louis, 2020 anno, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 23, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated March 22nd, 2022, for the 4747 Atkins Avenue and 4009 Delores Street area. Board Bill 24, sponsored by Alderman Colder, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to speed hunts to calm the flow of traffic on the 2200 block of Indiana Avenue, 2200 block of Missouri Avenue, Mississippi Avenue, between Guyer and Interstate 44 overpass, the 2200 block of Jewels, the 2100 block of Guyer Avenue, and the 2000 block of Ann Avenue, 2100 block of Allen Avenue, and the 2000 block of Allen Avenue. Board Bill 25, sponsored by Alderman Colder, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Don Kirby Way, pursuant to ordinance number 68937, which shall begin at the North Curb Line, Lamai Street, at the intersection of Lamai and the North-South Alleyway bounded by 13th Street to the East and Interstate Highway 55 to the west and shall run north on said alleyway to the north, I'm sorry, to the South Curb Line of Shenandoah Avenue at, at intersection Shenandoah Avenue and said alleyway. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reverend's due committee? Nope, pardon me. Pardon. We'll go back, recognize Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I'd like to ask for suspension of the rules to adopt Board Bill Number One for this agenda.
Okay, okay, we have a second on that. Sharita, please call the roll.
It's been moved in second.
Moved in second. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. President Reed. Twenty aye votes.
By your vote, you've adopted the motion by Alderman the nineteenth. Sharita, please place that at the end of the first reading calendar.
So noted.
And I believe we have to read it into record?
You should read it in, please.
Yeah, we'll be reading it into record.
Board Bill One, introduced by President Reed and Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city's bonded indebtedness establishing city tax rates and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
All right, thank you very much. Reverend's to committee?
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 15, 17, 24, and 25. To Neighborhood Development, Board Bill 16 and 23. To Education and Youth Matters, Board Bill 18. To Ways and Means, Board Bill 19, 20, and 21. And to Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill 22. That is the extent of reference to committee.
And Board Bill One?
And Board Bill One will be placed in Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you very much. Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of public safety with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance repealing ordinance 69864 and prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 27th Ward Liquor Control District, as established herein for a period of three years from the effective date hereof, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance prohibiting tents or similar shelters regardless of the materials in their construction or whether temporary or permanent within the public right of way or in a manner that would impede or the use or maintenance of public right of way and containing a definition of public right of way. That's the extent of the second reading. Report of standing committees.
Thank you. We will dispense with line items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Report of special committees, is there, so third reading consent?
We have none.
Okay, third reading, report of engrossment?
We have none.
Report of enrollment?
We have none.
I like the way this is going. And the courtesy resolutions calendar?
It was adopted under the special?
Correct, thank you very much. After that, we will go to... First reading of resolutions?
Resolution 19, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Zelp Creek Properties LLC in the City of St. Louis, enhanced enterprise zone.
Alderwoman Boyd, you're recognized on Resolution Number 19. Oh, Alderman Boyd. Okay. If you could go to the microphone so it goes into the record for STL. Thank you.
I move that you send it to the HUDs committee, please.
Sharita, please make note of that. He's going to, she's moving that we take Resolution 19, be assigned to HUDs committee. Okay. Changing?
No, it's to the HUDs, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, all right. So, the move that we move Resolution Number 19 to the HUDs committee.
Second. If you'd a second.
Okay. The move in second, thank you.
Resolution 20, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, 2019 Grand Center Community Improvement District Director's, Director Appointments.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on Resolution Number 20.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 20 for the Grand Center Community SID appointments. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That was, who was the second? I forgot, need to notate for the clerk.
Who was the second?
Alderwoman Boyd. Thank you very much. By your vote, you've adopted Resolution Number 20 by Alderman Davis. Thank you.
Resolution 21, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, Olive West CID Director Appointments.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I ask for favorable approval to, for Resolution Number 21, for the Olive West appointments for their SID. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Entertain a second. I believe Alderwoman from the fourteenth, Alderman from, Alderman from the twenty-third, we had a couple of seconds out there. All right.
Did he vote?
All in favor?
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, by your vote, you've approved the motion of Alderwoman from the nineteenth. Resolution 24?
Resolution 24, sponsored by Alderman Colder, SULAR CID Budget 2022 through 2023.
Who will be handling the... In the absence of Alderman from the seventh, Alderwoman from the fourteenth volunteering?
Take Resolution Number 24 to Ways and Means.
Okay, entertain a second. All right. With that, we will take Resolution 24 to the Ways and Means Committee.
Resolution 25, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and Alderman Stevens, Support of Medicare for All Act 2021.
All right. Alderwoman Boyd, you're recognized on Resolution 25.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I ask for favorable support for Board Bill, or Resolution 25, Support for Medicare for All to the Health Committee.
Okay. It's been requested that we move Resolution 25 to the Health Committee and seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth. And thank you for that. We'll move on to second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Wednesday, May 11, 2022, Ways and Means will have a meeting at 1:00 PM via webinar. Thursday, May 12, 2022, Health and Human Services will have a meet at 9:00 AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meet at 11:00 AM via webinar, and Personnel will have a meet at 1:30 PM via webinar. Friday, May 13, 2022, full board meeting, 10:00 AM in the chambers. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, thank you very much. Any other announcements? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, please proceed.
Thank you. I came over to this microphone so I didn't feel like I was breaking that microphone. You know, I have a couple of announcements, because you all know me by now. First, I would like to announce that this Sunday is a very important day in the City of St. Louis. It is Dot T. Kennedy's birthday. Does everybody know who Dot T. Kennedy is?
Yes.
So if it's his birthday, then whose birthday is it?
Terry Kennedy's birthday.
Who doesn't know that? They're twins. Okay. Happy birthday. We hope you enjoy your birthday, do everything humanly, heavenly, spiritually possible that you could do to celebrate you and the amazing work that you and your brother have done for the City of St. Louis. We appreciate you, we honor you, and we hope that you just take the time for yourself and for your brother, and please share that with him too. And this evening, at 6:30 at the Collective STL, they're having a Bend and Break Bread pop-up. You know, this is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so they're having a pop-up kickback with yoga, food, music, and friends. It's gonna be an amazing time. It's always an amazing time at the Collective, so shout out to them, 1400 North Market. And then tomorrow, it's pre-gaming for Mother's Day. It's Rose Day. If you haven't heard of Rose Day, my good friend Michael Powers, this is his fourth year, it's been sellout every year. It's tomorrow, RoseDaySTL.com. What you need to know is that this raises awareness for organizations, for improving the quality of life for women and girls. And the fact is that only 4% to 7% of institutional giving goes to organizations that service women and girls. So this is a good way for women, us, our entire community, families come out, we have a good time, you sipping for a good cause. Also, shout out to Diamond Divas, Two Death, they're gonna have the bull, so you can ride the bull for a good cause and have a good time tomorrow. The weather's gonna be amazing, so come out and kick off your Mother's Day celebrations there. Thank you.
Thank you all. Alderwoman from the twelve, you're recognized for your announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. Can we all hear me? Test, 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 perfect, thank you. So everyone is cordially invited to the Princeton Heights Neighborhood Association Annual Picnic, the second annual picnic, which is coming up Sunday, May 22nd, 2022.
Report of enrollment?
We have none.
I like the way this is going. And the courtesy resolutions calendar.
It was adopted under the special.
Is it correct? Thank you very much. After that, we will go to... First reading of resolutions?
Resolution 19, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Zelp Creek Properties LLC in the City of St. Louis, enhanced enterprise zone.
Alderwoman Boyd, you're recognized on resolution number 19. Oh, Alder, Alderman Boyd. Okay. If you could go to the microphone so it goes into the record for STL.
Okay. I move that you send it to the HUDs committee, please.
Sharita, please make note of that. She's going to, she's moving that we take, Resolution 19 be assigned to HUDs committee. Okay. Changing?
No, it's to the HUDs, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, all right. So the move that we move Resolution Number 19 to the HUDs committee. Okay. The move and seconded, thank you.
Resolution 20, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, 2019 Grand Center Community Improvement District Director's, Director Appointments.
Alderwoman from the 19th, you're recognized on resolution number 20.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 20 for the Grand Center Community Cid Appointments. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? That was, who was the second? I forgot, need to notate for the clerk.
Who was the second?
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Boyd. Thank you very much. By your vote, you've adopted Resolution Number 20 by Alderman Davis. Thank you.
Resolution 21, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, Olive West CID Director Appointments.
Alderwoman from the 19th, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I ask for favorable approval to, for Resolution Number 21 for the Olive West appointments for their Cid. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Entertained a second? I believe Alderwoman from the 14th, Alderwoman from, Alderwoman from the 23rd. We had a couple of seconds out there. All right.
Did he vote?
All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, by your vote, you've approved the motion of Alderwoman from the 19th. Resolution 24.
Resolution 24, sponsored by Alderman Kolder, SULAR CID Budget 2022 through 2023.
Who will be handling the... In the absence of Alderman from the 7th, Alderwoman from the 14th volunteering?
Take Resolution Number 24 to Ways and Means.
Okay. Entertain a second. All right. With that, we will take Resolution 24 to the Ways and Means Committee.
Resolution 25, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and Alderman Stevens, Support of Medicare for All Act 2021.
All right. Alderwoman Boyd, you're recognized on Resolution 25.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I ask for favorable support for Board Bill, Resolution 25, support for Medicare for All to the Health Committee.
Okay. It's been requested that we move Resolution 25 to the Health Committee and seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th. And thank you for that. We'll move on to second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, May 11, 2022, Ways and Means will have a meeting at 1:00 p.m. via webinar. Thursday, May 12, 2022, Health and Human Services will have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. via webinar. Public Safety will have a meeting at 11:00 a.m. via webinar, and Personnel will have a meeting at 1:30 p.m. via webinar. Friday, May 13, 2022, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, thank you very much. Any other announcements? Alderwoman 26, please proceed.
Thank you. I came over to this microphone so I didn't feel like I was breaking that microphone. You know, I have a couple of announcements because you all know me by now. First, I would like to announce that this Sunday is a very important day in the City of St. Louis. It is Doty Kennedy's birthday. Does anybody know who Doty Kennedy is? So if it's his birthday, then whose birthday is it? It's our clerk, our clerk, Terry Kennedy's birthday. So, who doesn't know that? They're twins. Okay. Happy birthday. We hope you enjoy your birthday. Do everything humanly, heavenly, spiritually possible that you could do to celebrate you and the amazing work that you and your brother have done for the City of St. Louis. We appreciate you, we honor you, and we hope that you just take the time for yourself and for your brother, and please share that with him too. And this evening, at 6:30 at the Collective STL, they're having a Bend and Break Bread pop-up. You know, this is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so they're having a pop-up kickback with yoga, food, music, and friends. It's going to be an amazing time. It's always an amazing time at the Collective, so shout out to them, 1400 North Market. And then tomorrow, it's pre-gaming for Mother's Day. It's Rosé Day. If you haven't heard of Rosé Day, my good friend Michael Powers, this is his fourth year, it's been sellout every year. It's tomorrow, Rosé Day, STL.com. What you need to know is that this raises awareness for organizations for improving the quality of life for women and girls. And the fact is that only 4% to 7% of institutional giving goes to organizations that service women and girls. So this is a good way for women, us, our entire community families come out. We have a good time, you sipping for a good cause. Also, shout out to Diamond Divas, Two Death. They're going to have the bull, so you can ride the bull for a good cause and have a good time tomorrow. The weather's going to be amazing, so come out and kick off your Mother's Day celebrations there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 12th, you're recognized for your announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. Can we all hear me? Test, 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 perfect, thank you. So everyone is cordially invited to the Princeton Heights Neighborhood Association Annual Picnic, the Second Annual Picnic, which is coming up Sunday, May 22, 2022, at 11:30 a.m. in the best park in the city, Wilmore Park. So down near Hampton Grabway. If you come, you can see me, you can see Alderwoman Schweitzer, you can get free food, games, music, and more, and you can even, even, even explore a fire truck and police vehicle. So everyone in the chambers, everyone watching today, you are cordially invited to the Second Annual Princeton Heights Neighborhood Association Picnic in the fantastic, best park in the city, Wilmore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, any other announcements? We have Alderwoman Boyd, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I want to say to my best friend, a happy birthday, Nathan Boyd. And so a lot of people don't understand, the old heads do, what long-time marriage is and how you become friends. And so the young people need to take lessons because when you've been with someone for almost 40 years and they celebrate their birthday, that makes you understand that God has put you all there together to be friends first and lover second. So happy birthday, Nathan Boyd.
All right, any other announcements? All right. Just remember that Saturday is Kentucky Derby Day, Sunday is Mother's Day, don't get your gifts confused. Oh, Alderwoman from the 14th.
I would like to wish the Alderman from the 12th a happy birthday. Today is his birthday. Can we all sing?
Well, we might try, but I don't know if we all can.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Alderman Stevens. Happy birthday to you.
Congratulations. All right, any other announcements? Thank you. I'll be signing autographs in the lobby after this, thank you. All right. Excuse Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the 19th, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we excuse Alderpersons from the 1st, 4th, 6th, 7th, 16th, 22nd, 25th, and the President.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Let's see, the noes have it, will be penalties given out. No, the ayes have it. All right. Okay, who seconded that motion? We didn't get to say, Alderwoman Boyd. All right, with that, unless you want to stand and watch me here for the rest of the day, I'll make them...
I'd like to move for a German, I'd like to move for a German to May 13, 2022, 10 a.m.
That's Friday the 13th, remember that.
Oh, wow.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion accepted. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.